Good evening, it's 7 o'clock. We have a call, we'll call a planning board meeting for order. First up for general information is Barry Roberts.
...
Just one. Well, oh, these are a complete set of plans, yeah. Give me all of them. I'll make that here.
And are we gonna do combined with the zoning board?
Yeah. I did get a call from Tim Nyheart today.
Right.
And for...
November 7.
November 7. They do have three, they'll have to go to their alternate because John Kukowski is not available. But they will have three people.
A call.
They'll have a call.
I got a call from Tim today, not, Tim Nyheart today, asking if we can do a joint notice. So we can definitely do a joint public hearing. So give me, we only need two sets of, give, well, we need two sets of labels and then give one to the ZBA so they can mail out their decision.
Give this to him?
Yes. Okay. I will, because all the abutters are the same, when I print up the legal notice and I publish it, I will take care of that. And I will also send them out, which will take care of all sending all of your abutters and notice, so they'll get a copy of that. So I'll talk at 10:00 in the morning. So we're doing a modification of the senior housing special permit. And the ZBA is doing the what? They're doing...
The use...
That way I could, I'll put it all in one notice.
That's for November 7?
Yes.
Do you want one of these?
Yeah, that's perfect. Ah, good. Okay.
I'd give Tim my check for 150. Now, do you need any money?
Yeah, we've already got, we've got these, we're gonna put...
This is an amendment of the prior ones.
Yeah.
10, 10, 17, right?
Yeah. 16.
16 or 17? Today's 17.
17, what's right? Right, 17.
17, yeah, okay. 10, 17. I was gonna say, we need a legal notice and the abutters. It's an amendment to the special permit, so we don't need the 320, we don't need 350 feet. They're probably going, the legal notice has to be run about 150 with a ZBA. It'll probably be about 175. So let's say 225 to cover the potential of a planning board. And pay that with a town court. Okay?
And I gave Tim 150 today. My, I gave him one of these applications.
Okay.
Do you want me to give them a difference? Do you want me to have him give me back that check and I'll give...
Yeah, give, get the check back from him.
Okay.
Because I will take, we'll take care of the legal notice. All they're gonna do is take care of whatever paperwork to mail out and whatever administrative fees, which is gonna be a lot less. So we'll take care of, I'll call 10:00 in the morning and let him know that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And that's gonna be for the 7th, right? Okay. Okay, I wanna put your name, so forgive me. Orchid? Orchid? Good enough.
I'm planning to open a nail salon right on Russell Road.
Could you speak louder?
Oh, we're gonna, we're planning to open a nail salon right on Russell Road.
Whereabouts?
207 Russell Road. It's all right, it's all good, I mean...
It's the Sears Twin, the twin building?
Yes.
The new twin buildings.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Next, a couple houses down.
Just past, oh, the new, the new one building.
Yeah, obviously Auto Express.
Okay. All we need is, you're gonna put a sign up?
Yes, the sign, the owner, he going to put the street sign.
Okay.
So he telling me he gonna do that, 'cause it's all different sections, I'm gonna do that on his own. So the people, we're gonna use it like 2 to 3 people.
Yeah, yeah. The property has been site plan approval, there's nothing else required. All we need to do is approve your signage, whatever you wanna do. Is that aquifer protection?
It's an aquifer.
It's an aquifer, okay. So yeah, we need to approve you for just a verbal approval of being an aquifer.
Is it an aquifer, is there anything that, with supplies they have, and if there's any hazardous material?
For nails? You can get, you can get a... Do you know what the aquifer is?
No, what is that?
It's, uh, recharge everything.
I know, I know.
The land that you're sitting on top of recharges our drinking water. That's called the aquifer. Okay? So we need to be very careful of any businesses that go in there, that they don't have the potential to pollute our aquifer.
So the only chemical that we use in a salon is acetone and alcohol and no MMA liquid. But we only use on a curtain. After we wipe and use it, we put it back to the container. When, after we use, we put it out in the container, we dump it out. No drain, no...
Nothing goes in the sewer system, in the water?
No, not even on grass.
Okay. Do you... Do you have any hazardous waste hauled off of your property? Do you have any, any company come in and take hazardous waste away from your prop, from your business?
No.
No?
No. But we own a nail salon, we used to own a nail salon in North Hampton.
Yeah.
And that's what we do daily. We put it in a gallon bucket.
Yeah.
And we throw it in a trash that, you know, the dumpster.
Yeah, so that just regularly goes in the dumpster and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's no drain or dump in the back or things like that. And the...
Is that liquid dumped in a dumpster?
No.
There's no, it's all dried, it's all dried up.
It's all dried up.
Acetone evaporates very quickly.
Yes.
You get a slight odor, but there's no... If you leave it, if you had it on a cloth, it'll probably evaporate in 2 or 3 minutes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's not really a major, I mean, chemical problem. But the, like, we gotta put the commercial exhaust fan up by square feet, that we have to suck whatever in the air.
Okay.
So it's pretty safe.
Okay. You're gonna have, you're gonna need to have a sign on your building?
We're gonna put the sticker on it, because in a building they have 200, over 220, and we only took half of it. And the owner, they don't know what to recommend us to put on for now. And they, they say, you can just put sticker, just to put it, for on the street sign, he gonna do.
Okay, we'll need to see what your sign is going to look like on the building. Okay, we need to approve your sign on the building, whatever that is.
So how, what are we gonna do?
Well, you're gonna have a sticker.
Yes.
Somebody's gonna make you a sticker. Before you have them make you a sticker, just come back to us at a meeting like this and show us what the sticker will look like, what all the sign for the building look like. Okay, we need to approve that.
How big is it gonna, how big is the sticker?
You know, like, the door, the door size?
Yeah.
Just letter, like, Hadley Nail Spa, just right on the window. Just big to here. 'Cause the size is already on the street, the owner gonna do that. So I call him up and...
When are you planning to open this?
Right now, there's nothing inside a building yet, 'cause it's still very sandy. I can show you some picture. And I wait for them to build everything else inside, in order for us to move in or to move on. Just for a look inside.
Oh, so you, oh, there's a lot of work, a lot of work to do on the inside there.
So, I guess 2 months or so.
Okay. Yeah, so, just when you, when you finally decide what the sign for, on the building will look like, on the door, whatever it is, just come back to us at this meeting.
Well, Jimmy, shouldn't she have the owners, he's gonna put one master sign here with all...
He's already, he's gonna come back to us for that. The owner's gonna come back for the street sign, he's gonna put a little bit of our keyboard, we just...
Right.
With like...
Yes. Individual...
Lines on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause the only thing that we're gonna do is just to stick it right on the door the customer walk in, just to stick it as they had the nail spa. So they recognize who, which one they can go in.
Okay.
'Cause we sharing the same, the same door.
Yeah.
Where we're walking, we're gonna put right on the door or the window.
Okay.
So it's nothing major right on the ceiling or, you know, a front, you know, overhead.
No, you're not gonna reflect that? Oh, just on the door?
Just stick it on the door.
Okay.
Because they have to divide in half of the size.
Okay.
So there's no chance for us to put like a really fancy one on.
Okay. So what are you gonna call this?
Hadley Nail Spa.
New nails salon. Had, Hadley...
Hadley Nails.
Hadley Nails Spa.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve as a business use in the aquifer, Hadley Nails and Spa.
Second.
Any discretion? Call or favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, Mr. Anderson.
And you'll return with sign.
What sign?
Sign sticker.
Yeah.
So should I bring approval, or should I...
Just a picture of what the signs gonna look like. You know, a regular piece of paper, sign, just how big will the sign be, what will it look like?
Okay.
That's all.
So we should, I mean, we can call you up, or to have a meeting again, or...
First and 3rd Tuesday of every month.
What?
First and 3rd Tuesday of every month. We meet right here.
So just walk in.
So if you come back the 1st, November 7th, with that sign, you'll be also...
Is that one we're having a joint meeting?
Yeah.
Does that meeting gonna be held here?
Right here.
So the same time?
Same time.
Yep, same time.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Good luck.
Good night.
Northeast Solar.
Good evening.
Hello.
So I have 2 informational packets. We're applying for a permit for a ground mounted solar array on Moody Bridge Road.
Okay. We need more than 2. We actually need like 4.
4 total?
Yeah, 4 total, we need 2 more.
Okay.
It's okay, because we gotta distribute them to other boards.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, this is just, how big is it, how big is it gonna be?
Total square footage?
No, no, the, yeah, the total KW.
Total KW? Uh, there's a one-line diagram and then on the back, I just have there, so it's...
What's the street number?
5 Moody Bridge Road.
So it's just off of Bay Road?
Yep.
Who's, who else is that?
That's Gene Foray's house, Gene Foray.
5, yes.
Whose property is that? Where does Moody Bridge start? Bay Road or towards Bay Bridge?
Moody Bridge.
Uh, Moody Bridge, right by where 47 comes on Bay Road.
Okay.
Yes, Bay Road, 47, eh?
No.
Well...
Bay Road. But where 47 and Bay Road meet, that, that's number 1 Moody Bridge.
16 panels, that's all?
Yep.
Can't put on the barn? The garage, or whatever it is?
So that's the house, actually. And the homeowner, because of trees that are near the house, she's unable to put it on her roof.
Oh.
Yeah. So she's got a whole area already cleared out, that's behind a fence. Where she wants to split the ground mounted solar array.
This should be on, both driven into the ground?
These are, actually, Elm Electrical did one on 47 not too long ago. And this is using earth anchors, which are kinda like a toggle bolt that are driven...
Oh, they, right, they screw into the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, they're, they're both are driven into the ground.
Yeah, but they're a lot lower impact than anything else, the other type of ground, so we just, there's a very little amount of material going into the ground.
How many panels?
16.
So how far off of Moody Bridge is it?
Right here.
Well, how many feet off is it? Is it right on the road?
The actual array?
Yeah.
Uh, it's well over 100 feet away from the road.
There's a picture of it someplace here. There was a picture somewhere.
It's actually, it's actually behind the house and then behind a fence that's behind the house.
Yeah, that's Vanossis, that's the next house from Vanossis, right? Here's Vanossis in the corner.
Right here.
How high is this thing gonna be off the ground?
The height's about 9 feet at its highest point.
Is there any screening from the street where you see that?
There actually isn't because of an existing fence.
What kind of existing fence?
It's about a 6-foot-high white, it's like one of those plastic type of picket fences.
And this thing is 9 foot and the fence is 6 foot?
Well, because of the grade, it actually drops behind.
What drops behind the floor?
The grade of the, of the ground on the fence.
That doesn't drop.
Drops a little bit. So the actual height, it's pretty difficult to see from behind that fence.
So where was it gonna be, where is the project gonna be on this property?
So here's Moody Bridge.
Yeah.
There's actually an access road here to the farm right here. And an actual array is gonna go back here. So on this, on any of the areas, you can't see the fence that exists. It goes from around here, all the way out here.
Okay.
So if you came from, say the...
Bay Road.
Well, if you came from Fort River, came from the, say, from the Fish and Wildlife on Moody Bridge, coming towards Bay Road?
Yes.
And you were coming up the hill?
Yeah.
There might be a second where you could see the array from that side, because the fence doesn't actually go...
That's after Stanley Bites, too.
Can I have a look to see where it is?
Vanossis House is right in the corner. It's right after Vanossis.
Which one?
After Ronnie Vanossis' house.
Okay. I said 12.
Here's the return state path across the street. She was on the finance committee? Across the street.
28.
Mm-hmm.
Who's looking at this?
Oh, let's see, we're supposed to review a small scale. I mean, how many copies do we have? Make sure you get them all. Conservation Fire Police.
Building Inspector, Conservation Fire Police.
Building Inspector, so we need 4 total. I need, I need 4 more copies.
4 additional copies?
4 additional copies.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I have my...
Go ahead. As soon as you can get those to us, I can distribute them for review, 'cause there's a 35 days we're gonna have to review for. And the public hearings or anything like that. So I don't know if you can make it, well, you probably will get them tonight.
So it's a 5 Tuesday month, so I think we're good for, we penciled this in for November 21st.
That would be 35 days, 34 days.
This picture here, this is the north side of this property? What's this line here? Is this where the zoning board is gonna sit?
Yeah, this is actually the outline of what the array would be.
What's this, the north side of the property?
Uh, that's actually the southwest side of the property.
Southwest side.
If you could get, if you get 2 more copies, 4 more copies? And just drop them off on the planning board mailbox at the town hall.
Okay.
And distribute them.
Okay.
And soon as you do that, that'll be great.
This is the southwest.
What's the address of this place again?
5 Moody Bridge.
5 Moody Bridge. What's this up here?
So you want to try it for the 21st?
Sure.
Okay.
It doesn't have a direction from there.
Well, this is north, this is Vanossis' house.
I thought you should apply every map that we've got together as directions.
How many? Okay, that's...
So it's a...
It's a 5.12.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ted Michowski.
Yes, sir.
Do you wanna keep this one?
You keep it. The board that he's giving me will take care of this.
Okay. I'm here tonight because Tom Cork said I should, yeah. I filled out an application for a business certificate. And what I intended to do is, I guess the name of the proprietorship will be Outback Wood Products. And basically, the best acreage out back, hence the name. And... She told me that the building inspector needed to review this before she could issue a certificate and accept a $50 fee. So I was fine with that. So here's, I'm not sure who's writing this, it doesn't look like Jessica's. But the note says on Tom Cork stationery, "New business must be approved by planning board, administrative review. Go in to see them 1st, 2nd, 3rd Tuesday nights. Be there at 6:45. Sign, sign as tenancy." I was like 5 minutes late, hope you're not gonna hold that against me.
Um, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I guess basically, that's why I'm here. In the, in the area, there's Sabasko cordwood, there's Bay Road cordwood across the street.
So you're just, you're just cutting cordwood for first, for sale for fire?
Yeah, basically.
So that's what, so you're, so you're just gonna do the same thing with Sabasko or Keelidus across the street?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's it. I mean, that's, so I couldn't understand that, but I thought that was agriculture, but, you know, it is technically a business, but...
So what's the, what's the street address?
30, oh, actually, 36 Lawrence Plain Road is where the business will be conducted. It'll be on office, it'll be within the business zone, as a matter of fact. It'll be the office in the first barn, it'll...
Where, where, you're still part of B&amp;M where you've had the...
Right, exactly.
Businesses all...
Yeah, so it's still, I mean, it's his own business, so I'm not sure, is that considered business? If you sell cordwood, it's agricultural, isn't it? The way I understand it, the Massachusetts general law.
Well, if you go Thursday, Thursday night to Studdland, you're gonna find out, because there's the same thing going on in Studdland. We asked, we asked, the, I asked the, you're in a business zone, and you're, you're still doing something, and B&amp;M has always operated...
Right.
For the last number of years, so in many cases, you're grandfathered.
Right, but this is, okay.
But it's a new grandfathering business.
But it's still, it's still a business there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's only office work that's gonna be done in the business.
I talked to the town, what you call it, attorney about this a while ago. And he said if you're cutting your own cordwood and selling it, it's agricultural. If you're buying cordwood, in other words, you go to somebody other than your own cordwood and cut it and sell it, then it may not be considered agricultural.
Well, no, I mean, I just wanna be considered what Bay Road cordwood is, Sabasko cordwood, and then there's a new one, Clean Cordwood. I think Mr. William Smith operates that. So did he have to come in front of this board?
He did not come in front of this board.
What about Sabasko?
Sabasko did not come in front of this board.
What about Kenny Kew?
Maybe they're not applying for a business permit.
Well, I don't want a business permit, should I not be here then? It's agriculture. I just wanted, I'm just saying, I'm gonna do the business in a business zone.
Should we have a...
Outback is an agriculture, no question.
Local business now. But it's still the same thing. It's exactly what local business are looking for.
So you're, you're doing it, no exterior alterations, you're doing it either outside?
Well, I may do a shed for the wood processor, like Kenny Kewer thought, or Sabasko has.
You're just kind of a lean...
Or Smith has, it's, you know, I don't know if it requires even a building permit, if it does, we'll seek one. It'll be, you know, to standards, whatever Mr. Nyheart requires.
More of a roof over the wood processor?
Yeah, I mean, it would be, you know, it would be the basic thing, it would be probably subtly exposure for the employee or employees to work in. It's not a big deal, I don't think, I mean, wouldn't that be... I mean, if there was no, nothing there, I mean, that would be no different than what Mr. Smith is doing over...
Well...
He didn't come in?
No, none of those gentlemen, none of those gentlemen came in.
We've gotta act what's before us, I mean, not what's happening here and there.
Well, it's a precedent.
What's before us, Teddy, is the fact that...
You could, you could fight off the town...
Well, no, I know for a fact, though, I mean, it's, it's a precedent law, I mean...
No, no, all I'm saying is you could fight off the town clerk if they have applied for business...
How many cords are you gonna be cutting here? I don't know, as many as I can, I have a lot of expenses. I should be retired, but...
Well, you know, is it gonna become a commercial venture, or is it gonna...
Well, I'm not doing it for pleasure, I could do something else.
How many, how many cords of wood are you gonna sell?
As many as I can.
Is it gonna be like Allard?
How many does Allard sell?
1,000?
1,000?
Cords, 1,000 cords of...
I don't know.
So are we gonna have trucks going in and out? And...
Well, I'm not gonna, it's not gonna be a sign out in front that says Clean Cordwood.
I mean, to make it clear cut and make it fair to you, is, you should come in and kind of have a site plan. Either we can waive the site plan after we see all the details?
Sure.
And, or we can say, grant it without any other deliberation.
But I mean, isn't there a precedent law? I mean, they challenged Mr. Lashway over on Route 9. He can't do it out back because it's residential agriculture. When the neighbors found out through court that in fact it's agriculture, was the example.
Well, you, that, it's not that simple. They gave him operating hours, he only can operate from like 9 to 3, and so...
9 to 3?
He's got some very restrictive hours put on that.
On the back, not over 9.
Oh, and, and...
Okay, well, I mean, whatever, it's gonna be Mr. Kew, it's gonna be your job.
I think we should have a...
You wanna schedule a hearing?
A simple site plan review, so we will know exactly what's happening.
I guess if you could just come in with, you're gonna have a drawing of your property someplace.
Yeah, but I mean, nothing else in the neighborhood has a precedent, and we don't care about that?
Well, precedent, zoning...
But Tim Nyheart's sending you.
I know, zoning doesn't...
He didn't send anybody else here?
No.
Just me?
We don't, we don't enforce. He is the zoning enforcement officer.
I see, selective enforcement.
You ask him why he sent you and didn't send them.
I'll ask him that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If he gives you an answer that satisfies you, come back.
So that was item A, I'll do that.
So come back...
I won't waste any more time.
Come back to one of these meetings?
Sure.
With just, even just the tax map?
Yeah.
And sketch in where the buildings are, where you're gonna be doing...
In the meantime, the cordwood, I have to cut it, I just cut it up for myself, for my own personal use?
We, we can't tell you what to do or what not to do, only the zoning enforcement officer can do that.
I'll ask him, all right. Well, I've asked the zoning enfor, this is item B, that was item A. I'm gonna make this quick, 'cause I know I have to come back on this one. But I, I've checked recently with the assessor's office, and to my surprise, after all the rigmarole, and I think 3 of you members were here, and not sure if Sarsie was here or John, I've asked for the town and you approve funds to put the zoning of the aquifer on the tax maps. So Mr. Nyheart, for example, where the line crosses, I'm using this for example, crossing Route 47, right here, just south of the high tension lines that cross Route 47. Someone has to own those properties, so either, it might be one big parcel, either they own, they're in the aquifer, out of the aquifer. He needs to know that. I don't think he's schooled to interpret this, to go to a tax map. I don't think he has to be schooled for that, it's not his job. He told me that, it's not his job. So I asked specifically, so these would be on the tax maps. And to my surprise, your assistant there, Mr. Zadonik, I think?
Dan Zadonik.
Dan, he goes, no, we've never done that. After 4 years, right? So 4 years, right? 4 years. So this argument goes back to Mr. Smith blocking a cover, diverting water within the aquifer protection. That's a clear violation of his zoning ordinance. So I pointed it out to Mr. Nyheart, and he can't interpret this plan onto the zoning. So... So can I hire a professional, someone from Tyon Bond, to come in front of this board and tell them that yes, Mr. Smith is violated, and this is in the aquifer protection? And I'll pay for it, but in the end, the town needs to reimburse me. They didn't do what I've asked for, you said you had monies for it and you were going to do it. And I think you exercised my request, but it never got done on the other end.
Yeah, I thought, well, the assessor's office runs the G I S mapping system.
Well, they didn't, they don't know how to do it then.
And I thought they were going, they only upgrade it once a year. Uh, and I thought they were going to add in zoning map.
I don't think it takes a computer genius to do that, but, you know, there's a problem there, I mean, they just haven't done it. Four years have elapsed. And I've had a very expensive lawsuit caused by Mr. Nyhart, and it has indirectly regarding this, and he, and they just sit on it, they drag their feet. The lawsuit's been going on for four years. The town's firm has changed lawyers, so I'm paying my lawyer to talk to the new lawyer for the same bullshit we talked about four years ago. So who's going to pay for all that? I'm not scolding you, I think you did your job. But on the other end, you're saying, I mean, can't you tell them, do your job?
They don't work for us.
Well, who do they work for?
We can ask, the, we can ask the assessors to update their maps with zoning information.
But Mr. Nyhart cannot interpret this, this is a Tyon Bond plan that was generated in January two thousand. The issue was in two thousand and ten, as far as I know, this is your current map, the only map, the most current map, that shows, shows the zoning. And...
There is a zoning map on the town website.
Well, tell that to Mr. Nyhart.
In fact, he should know, we have sent him...
I mean, he always communicates with you, that's why I'm here tonight. He says, see the planning board?
Okay.
But he told me to see the planning board, and he never said anything about the other three in the neighborhood. He never showed up here to do what I got to do.
You ask, you have to ask him.
Well, so I give enforcement.
I don't know what the, I don't have an answer.
Yes, we can only, we can only draft people to come in front of us.
Well, what was the issue in Sunderland?
There was a Saw Bill, Kids moved the Saw Bill.
Right.
And the building inspector, it was in the residential agricultural district, building inspector shut them down.
So that's going to court?
It's going to, so the appeal for the building inspector's decision goes to the zoning board of appeals, and they're going to have their hearing Thursday night.
And if that fails for the...
Then it goes to court.
Then it goes to court. So should I just wait for that ruling and then you guys act?
Well, no, every case is different, but it'd be interesting for you to go and just see how it comes out.
I've got better things to do, I've got to...
I'll be able to read about it in the newspaper.
What?
I'll be able to read about that one in the newspaper.
Well, it would be inaccurate, but never mind.
Well, I'm not here to amuse you, believe me. I've got unbelievable attorney's fees that I need to pay for, now I can't even do this, that was my dream, to pay off these bills. I don't know, I, I'll figure out something. So can I go on the agenda about this, and you can talk to the assessors why this is not part of the map, so Mr. Nyhart can clearly say, yes, Mr. Smith was violated? Because he doesn't want to say that, because he can't interpret the map. So why are they not putting this map on the town's tax map? I was specifically here for that reason over four years ago, and you all voted on it, and you were going to do it. So you did your part.
So we have a different map.
How much did that, how much did that fee, what was the fee for that?
What?
Somebody charged you to put the aquifer on the tax maps, but they're not on the official Town of Hadley tax maps.
Well, it's on the, it's not on the tax map, it's on the zoning map.
Who paid for that, that's the point. You authorized it.
Our budget paid for the zoning map.
Right. And you didn't put it on the tax map? That was your request, it was specific.
That was the request to the board, to the assessors to do that. We can't explain why they haven't done that.
Yeah.
Because they had, they were able to, they were able to get the computer-generated aquifer map.
Well, can you explain why I'm the only one here to...
No, we can't.
To comply with, it looks at Mr. Nyhart's writing on the town clerk's stationery, so I don't know what that's about, but again... Why am I the only one? There's three other ones right...
You would have to ask, you would have to ask him. We're not trying to give you the runaround, we're just, we don't know, we don't have that answer.
We're telling you exactly what to do, ask Nyhart.
Maybe I'll move to Sunderland. Work with the guys over there. This is crazy.
Should I just note you didn't participate in that?
Absolutely. I got an item C, but it's like seven thirty, you probably might be on my allotted time.
What do you got for item C?
I'll come back next meeting.
Okay, all right. John Furman and Jim Channing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Need I present these for you, please?
Yes, what are we, what are we looking at?
The Bible, hopefully, the last version of the site plan with the special conditions endorsed and attached in the front, there's four copies there, I do have smaller versions for your education.
This is what we approved, or what, what is this now?
So this, there's three minor alterations which we'll go through. But as you're familiar with, condition twelve V requires a final full set to be endorsed by the chair, the clerk, to be submitted to both the building inspector, the town clerk, one for your copy and one on-site during active construction. The three, like, so get into why we're here, how we got here, aside from the fact that we have to be here to have your endorsement. We've been in conversations with Tim Nyhart for some time, and there's some concerns over the past month, that's of one final consistent set of plans. And so this is it, and so the amendments that, that come from both, gave you a letter correspondence of September fourteenth and September twenty-seventh, plus some concerns just to have everything consistent, copacetic, and all before you, and this is what that is. So there are some, not changes, but there's certainly some items were located, for instance, on site plans, some items were not on the master plan signs, but were on one site plan, and he just asked that they all be included on both site plans or consistencies. And so that was done. As well as some other elevations are questioned with respect to utilities, as it relates to both grease trap, external grease trap, as well as the elevation of the water line and the hybrid relocation. So that note was done as well. The three, I guess for your education, for your proposal or consideration at this point, there are three additional items that would be considered, in my opinion, alterations or minor site plan changes, which we have been presenting before you for consideration as to whether or not it requires a new public hearing or not. The first one is the inclusion or the addition of a D E F or diesel exhaust fluid tank, that were not shown on the initial plans because of our interpretation, it's not a permitted tank. And diesel exhaust fluid is just, I mean, sixty-six percent iodized water, it's a non-hazardous, non-flammable, non-controlled substance. But we do show it on the plan for construction purposes, as well as just in terms of people's knowledge, obviously, if a fire were to occur, the fire department goes out, they want to know what's in tanks, I mean, similar to a farm, whether it be cow...
What is it again, though?
It's a diesel exhaust fluid. So it's an additional primarily water, it's a non-hazardous substance, but it's located within a tank that will be underground, located near...
What is that used for? Because we did...
All the new diesel technology for all the trucks and all the cars, there's a diesel fuel tank, then you have a separate tank which includes, which has this D E F, and it's injected into the motor, and it's for emissions purposes. It's non-flammable, it's just like, it's water and I forget what...
What this was applied for was specifically not to be a truck stop, and it wasn't supposed to be trucks coming in there.
This is not a truck stop, so you have pickup trucks, and you have cars that are
Oh, this is for like, oh, the diesel automobiles and stuff.
It's a separate diesel canopy, correct.
Yes, okay.
It's only related to that.
So D E F, if you go, where's it going to be located?
There, first of all.
Yes?
Underground D E F tank, called out on C two, right next to the unloading space. What do you have this? Underground D E F tank.
So when construction began, it seems like it had to stop because certain requirements of Hadley were not paid attention to, was that? How do we know, how do we know that these plans are going to be what somebody tells those people to do over there?
So this, this plan, first of all, will be required to be on-site, second of all, there's four copies, one for you to hold on to, one for the building inspector, and one for the town clerk.
So somebody's not going to show up on the site and say, hey, forget about this, put it over here, are they?
Well, they can without being in violation of it, if more violation obviously, then no, you'd be...
That's what happened the first time, though, wasn't it?
There were some concerns with respect to consistency in the plans, and that's why we require these, you know, one final full set of consistent plans.
So this has to be approved by our conservation commission?
I, I can actually get into that. If you want, I can do it.
Do we just go through the three modifications?
Yeah, so first is the D E F tank, the second is what was a bump out for the drive-through window, there's a two-foot bump out we had on the initial plan that was removed on this plan.
Excuse me, are you saying there was a site, a set of plans that told them that they could do what they were doing over there that we didn't see? Because you said there were different sets of plans. So some, did somebody think that they could actually do what they were doing because a set of plans told them that? If so, I'd like to see those set of plans.
No, it actually didn't occur that way.
So, so what he told me was not correct about...
No, no, it was, so we went to conservation commission, and we got a set of plans approved. We submitted to planning board, and we generally got that same set of plans approved. We took the plans, you had requested some modifications during that process, getting rid of the detention basin in back, if you recall, we had an open detention basin, you didn't want it, so we went underground. So then we went back to conservation commission, and we, we updated those plans from then. As we were applying for utility permits, and we were looking for water connections with the D P W, he required us to move different, different items, so our service, he wanted somewhere, so we generated a plan that addressed his concern, and we put a revision date on it, said we're going to move the water service from here to here. So then he took that plan and went over to conservation commission, and they said, well, that has a different date on it, so how come we don't have this plan? So then as he went into planning, Tim didn't have this plan, so it was that one plan that kind of got everybody looking at, saying, well, they have a different plan that they're looking at than the rest of the commission did. So then as they started diving into it, there were some mistakes on the, on the drawings that were identified. So the, the building plans that were submitted didn't have the bump out on it, whereas the site plans did. And that was just a mistake on the architect's design. So that was when Tim basically said, listen, we've got a couple issues we've got to take care of, D P W's got a different set of plans than the rest of the board, we need to have a set of plans that is consistent for all the boards, and that's what we're doing here now. So nothing actually got built out there that we have to actually take out and redo. It's, it's just, it's not, that's, that's what's being portrayed, but that's not what happened.
Is everything here, the building and all the layout, with the same measurements on the boundary line to, to side, front, back dimensions, everything is the same as the original one we, we approved?
The, the building front setback is the same, I believe the side setback from Bay Road is different because we took that two-foot bump out off, so that actually got bigger, it got longer. Nothing got closer. It's not closer to this.
Okay, and, and a third item? You said there was three.
It's a stormwater, yeah. Yeah, it's a drainage.
Now, I'm confused. We approved one building.
Yes.
I see you.
You're showing two.
I, I see, you're right, Jim.
The, the second building was required by conservation and the planning board because there was, this, this is a master plan set. So you approved only the Pride development, but that plan is a master plan, and that's a...
No, 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 no.
That is an indication of what...
We never saw a second building.
If I, if I could finish.
Well, you just tried to slip a whole master plan in.
No.
So we've got to hold, run a whole public hearing then.
Yeah, it's not what we're trying to do. So the master plan, this project went through M E P A, and that master plan was what went through M E P A. The project that we're building is only for the Pride store. Conservation Commission wanted to see the entire build-out, and because the building department wanted a consistent set of plans for all departments, that's why that master plan is in there. If you don't want that plan, just rip it out. It's that simple, we don't have to give it to you. Um, but that's why it's in there, we're not trying to slip anything in. If you look at the construction details following, there's nothing relating to that building on any of the plans that were being constructed.
Okay.
There's actually nothing else on that plan.
Then you're showing an above-ground stormwater management, management basin, I thought everything was going to be below grade.
There is no above-ground stormwater management basin.
Above-ground stormwater management basin.
That is, again, part of what that master plan building will be, when that comes in, when we have a tenant identified, they'll be backing in front of you to permit that and do their own stormwater. Okay, we're not building that, that's, nothing's being done with that. The only purpose of that plan is there is because the building inspector wanted a consistent set with all departments. If you don't want it, just rip it out of the set and throw it away, and then...
Well, it won't be consistent then.
Well, that's, so I can't help you with that.
On, on the one hand, they are correct. What we ask for is something that shows build-out of the whole site. That's what conservation commission wanted, that's what we wanted. However, the way it is depicted here implies that we may have approved this.
That's not correct.
Well, that's what...
Yeah, if, if, if it would make, make the decision better, you could actually X that out and say, not approved at this time, and nothing changed.
Why can't you just put it in the language that we're just dealing with area A, and that's it? You're not doing anything other than area A.
You approved page C three.
That's correct.
That's area A, right? They get this identified as area A, right here.
That's like...
This is what...
Yes, right here. Oh, that's what, where do you see area A?
Right there in the building, right in the middle.
All right, he's on a different plan.
Total area, oh yeah.
Yeah, total area. If you, if you go back to the master plan, this was a proposed cropping line that separates the Pride development from the future development, that is fictitious, that doesn't exist. So until this property is subdivided, nothing can be built anyway because you don't allow two principal uses on the same lot.
Yes, we do, we do.
We don't have this identified, though. It's, it just doesn't...
Okay, let's see what your footnote's here, say, we can solve that. Okay, so it does address it.
It says right in here, this pressure is only to the east.
Yeah, I think the footnote counts.
Okay. Let's let the chairman go to sign this.
Correct, okay, yes, but let me just check.
Now, can the, I didn't notice the canopy on, on, that's the canopy covering the pumps, right?
That's correct.
Is there a picture, color? What's, what's it going to look like? I don't recall...
It would be part of whatever we submitted initially because that hasn't changed.
I don't, I don't recall the color rendering of that canopy, I do of the building, but maybe I missed it.
It, it's not in that set, that's only in the site plans.
But, I don't know.
All the parking places, spots are the same?
They are.
None decreased, none increased?
No, there's only three changes proposed. There's only three changes proposed. It's the addition of that DEF tank, it's the change of the removing the two-foot bump out, and it's a change in the drainage. Everything else is the same. And if you didn't get that master plan in the initial set, then it's being submitted now because the building inspector asked for consistency.
And the road to Bay Road is part of this project?
Uh, yes, that is what we... So we have a connection to the old Bay Road. The curb cut that is shown on the master plan that is further west for the future building, that's not part of that.
So I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to deal with the fact that we reference a particular plan set. Half of the pages have been modified since then.
Why can't we have this references building A and that's building B for futures and this... And reference this... This permit is only for a reference A building.
Yeah, but part of the problem is we approved a set of drawings that were dated 8-2016. These drawings, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 10 out of basically 20 drawings are dated The question is, can we make an administrative decision to approve this or do we have to reopen the hearing?
Because for those three changes, that can be done administratively.
And that's all we're asking for.
But?
There's no other changes in the set.
So if you've got your original plan out here, everything would be the same except those three items that you're talking about?
Yes.
Your original plans that you have that we...
Yes, I think they're back in my office at the moment, but...
That's all right. This is still on tape here, so this... What they're saying to us, that the only three items that they're talking about, that's the only difference from the plan we originally...
Now, all of... Okay, C2, I understand C2, that's okay. We don't need that one, but grading and drainage, what's the difference on October 16 versus the U2 plan?
Sure, if I could flip to the set, I can actually show that to you. So I believe in your email, you received correspondence from Ducey Associates. If you haven't opened it up, there's a copy of it that we'll email to you today. So as a part of the project, and we've got a completed common procedures to go through what's called a value engineering, separate set of eyes, not necessarily what a project looks at and see how we can make things more economical. So on the original set of plans, there was a catch basin that was here, and this basin, this basin, and this catch basin were called storm scepter basins. So through the value engineering process, we determined that we could eliminate this basin, take the drainage high point, which is back here, and slide it over, and change these two storm scepter catch basins into regular catch basins with a hooded outlet and a sum on it. Change this manhole to a storm scepter structure, and then not have any reduction in the quality of the stormwater going into this infiltration system. So we appeared at the conservation commission last Tuesday. And we presented this modification to them. And the planning board actually was the mechanism for getting the stormwater reviewed for this project initially through Ducey Associates. So the conservation commission voted to approve these changes pending a positive letter from the original peer reviewer that said they reviewed our documentation and it's either equal to or better than what was proposed. So the next day, we contacted Ducey Associates, we gave them these sets of plans, talked with them almost every day when they had questions, and that's the letter that they generated which basically says the changes are equal or better than what was originally proposed. So that's the change in it. So it's more efficient from a cost perspective and it provides better water quality to this system on the infiltration.
So if there was a gas spill or fuel oil spill out there, no fuel oil can get into that back basin there?
No, and actually, less does. So under the original proposal, I'm not sure if any of you know how a storm scepter works, but a storm scepter has an insert in the basin. It's a plastic insert, so you can never see what's underneath. So when water comes in, it all goes underneath that plastic insert, then there's a big neck that hangs down. So any fuel product that happens to fall in there floats and it stays in there. So we took those, that goes out, and we put a regular catch basin with a hooded outlet. So that hooded outlet provides the same type of protection. So now you... So let's just say that those two things being equal. A storm scepter kept water or gas at the collection point, so does the catch basin. On the original design, once the water left that storm scepter, it went directly into this infiltration system. On the new design, once the water leaves the catch basin, it goes into a storm scepter that collects all of these basins right here. So you actually have a second structure in the stormwater stream that could hold sediment and fuel product back if it escapes these first ones, these first two. So this design does have more redundancy built into it than the initial design. And that's why we're asked for. Not only is it less expensive, we actually get better quality out of it. And that's exactly what the peer review letter says. And that... So the grading and drainage and the erosion control plan were both updated to show that change because both those plans show the catch basin. So you can see that's what was right there. Yeah. So that takes care of basically these two. And then the master plan is... Sounds like it's an addition to the plan set. You guys didn't see it before.
Yeah, the master plan, I worry about because it specifically only addresses, as I said, only one. Now, existing condition plan S V1.
Right. So S V1 is the existing survey that was performed for the project. And I think the only change that happened to this is that they couldn't tell what was the existing conditions plan at the conservation commission site. So we put S V1 on it. That's the only reason that it has a date. It's existing conditions, nothing's changed. So that one, that's the... If you pulled up this plan from the existing filing, that S V1 would not be there.
As-built floodplain?
Okay, so that's S V...
Three.
S V3.
How did we handle the compensatory storage in the floodplain?
How did we handle it?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't understand your question.
Okay. If, for example, what's... 125 is the...
Yes.
The FEMA level for a floodplain.
Yep, right.
And some of this was below it.
That's right.
And so where'd the compensatory fill come from?
Yeah, so what we looked at here, so let me answer both questions at the same time and that might help. So S V3 is a new plan that was introduced for the conservation commission. And what this is, is the as-built of the compensatory storage calculations and grading that was done. So conservation commission had a requirement that said that all of this work here, which is S V3, all of this work there had to be done... Yep, right here. I think S V3 is back this way. Hold on. Here's the 125. Oh, you have two sets. That's why.
This is all on the flood. So this is your storage.
Right here, this next one. So S V3 was one of the requirements for conservation commission is that the capacity of the floodplain compensatory storage calculations be verified and everything stabilized before we could start construction of the station. And that's exactly what S V3 does. So that is also a new plan to your set because all you had originally was the compensatory storage drawing, which was C8, I believe, in your set. And if you look at the grading that is on our grading drawing, C3, you'll notice that it matches the grading that we have on here. So that's what the purpose of that plan was, was to verify that. Conservation commission looked at that. So that's a new plan as well.
Store elevations, A1.
I don't think those are in there, are they? Are they... Oh, they're in there. Yep.
So, next one. If construction hadn't stopped and kept going, we wouldn't have never seen these plans?
No, we were actually in the process of getting them updated because one of the issues that we had is that the... On the, if you look on the C3 project sheet, there's the future building pad. That's required to be stabilized before we can start construction. We have a tremendous amount of excavation to do on this site. All of those infiltration systems all have to be dug out. It's all sand. So in order to stop to keep moving, we were piling the soil up on that pad site. And then we noticed that the conservation commission requirement basically stated that that had to be stabilized. So we were in the process of notifying everybody that we had some changes to do when that stop work order came.
Now, where is the drawing with the setbacks on the road? Where was the...
Whoa, 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 whoa. Let's go through the change in the drawing, then you can ask your question, Joe, just to be clear.
Okay. So I'm not the architect, I'm not really sure what the updates were on this, but I believe what happened is when you look at the building, this side over here had a two-foot bump out because of the drive-through. And I think, so if you look at east, you're going to want to look at, let's see, east. So you're going to want to look at this side here, and there would have been a line here that shows where that bump out was. So that was taken away because of that change.
And let's see, store elevation, A2, floor plans, I'm assuming floor plan...
The floor plan is probably the same thing.
Same thing with the bump out.
Yeah, that would be, let's see, where's the front part? It's here. Drive-through is right here. So that bump out was right here.
Okay. We'll record it.
Right here. So you can see the wall is now straight. So the bump out used to be like this.
Landscape plan, floor plan lighting, changes in yard change. Landscape, S4.
Uh, do you know what was changed on the landscape?
Just the addition of DEF tank and the removal of the bump out.
Oh, we did it on every single plan. Oh, that's S4. Yeah, so that makes sense. So the landscaping itself has not changed. Again, we took the bump out off, we added the DEF tank. So the landscaping has not changed. And that would probably be the same for the utility plan.
That's true.
Same thing. I don't know if this board received Tim's letter?
Yes.
That basically had all of the things that they wanted corrected. There was like, for instance, C4 might have been called a lighting plan, but on the cover sheet, it was called a landscaping plan. So he went through and had a whole list of housekeeping things like this that he wanted changed as well. So those were all incorporated into this set.
Well, one of it was not really housekeeping, the fact that you were infringing upon the 50-foot setback. And I don't see any drawings indicating the setback line, and what did you change there?
Uh, the... I'm not sure where the setbacks would have been identified. Would be on the layout plan by Pride. Try the C7.
And C2 has a setback.
So...
Does center?
No.
C3. C3.
Uh, C2. Try this one here.
C2 has a setback.
No, they don't.
50 foot, right here.
Yeah. Oh, it has, yeah, it has the overall line, but it doesn't have the actual setback dimension. So to your comment, I don't know that we were violating the setback because if you look at where the 50 foot is, we're more than 30 feet away from it.
Reeve, you have his letter?
I do. Tim's concerned with the, building inspector Nyhar's concerned with respect to the setbacks or where the footings were initially tentatively placed. And with respect to that, and that really related to the bump out and that...
Where abouts another draw?
Closer to Bay Road. So there were some concerns with respect to the bump out and the footings were here as to whether or not it would in fact give appropriate distance. Those footings were not accurate for two reasons. One, the bump out, and two, the placement of them. So that precipitated the stop work order. Obviously, that's been...
The bump out was encroached over the...
No.
There were footings that were potentially within the 50-foot setback, were actually closer. The building initially was sighted, which building inspector Nyhar's initial concerns were perhaps potentially too close to, in fact, not where it's supposed to be. You tell you that's been fixed for two reasons. One, the bump out. The second, those footings obviously were removed, they're now placed in the appropriate place where they should be. So that was with respect to the concern as to whether or not it was sighted or placed appropriately.
But that would have been really odd if you were in the 50-foot setback, if that's the setback line.
I think the issue is, is that Tim saw the bump out and wasn't aware. I think he, at the time, he was under the impression that the building was set on the 50-foot setback, so that two-foot bump out would have been over the line. But clearly see, you know, this is the 50-foot setback, we've got at least another 20, 25 feet before we reach the front of the building.
Then if you're doing a S6, the utility...
Utility, again, it would be adding the bump out, getting rid of the bump out and adding the DEF tank to it.
S7 is the same thing.
Same thing. And I'm sure the sign plan is the same thing. Yep, the DEF tank and the bump out.
Okay. And then sign plan, let's see.
So this one would be a combination. It would be the removal of this, the DEF tank, and then the kicking of the two-foot bump off the plan.
Okay. Is the canopy in the 50-foot setback?
No.
Right along, right beyond it.
No, the 50-foot setback goes along the front and the canopy is sitting right on it.
Okay.
That's just a call out for the canopy. The canopy is the dotted line.
Okay, well, it appears that there is a canopy here and you labeled the canopy that way. Misinterpretation.
Yeah, so it's right on the front line. Same thing here, just if you put it here, you wouldn't be able to see the pumps. So we put the note offset over it.
Definitely the same, but in there.
I mean, certainly, we've been jumping serendipity from here to here to here to here. I still think we should have probably gone through the whole thing in a more logical scene, scene like we traditionally do, and we could cover everything. But if you're satisfied with the fact that...
We just went through every single date that wasn't, that was after October 2nd, I mean, August 2nd. But how do we address that?
Is there a condition on your plan that basically say any changes have to be brought back to the board, which I think is one of the last ones?
Yeah, the thing is, this has been recorded on a set of drawings.
Right.
Plan set as of 8-216, and half the drawings are after 8-216. That's what they were trying to deal with.
Right. I thought it was one of these...
Well, yeah, it says you have to come back, but now we're going to... Okay, you're back.
Yep.
We can't just sign this and say, "This is fine." We have to figure out how to incorporate, which I think we can do by an amendment of the original decision to reflect the changed dates.
Can we look at note on here for this?
Why can't we just make a motion to, you know, agree to the revised plan date?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, yeah, that's, we're going to do an amendment.
To site plan approval.
To site plan approval.
So it originally was approved, what was the date of the, I guess, 16th? Eight, 16?
16?
16.
So...
The total signed square footage is proper?
Yep, 20, 20, 57. It's under 64, 58 square feet. Yep.
There's no signs you guys are putting on back of that building?
Whatever's on the plan, which is what was originally approved, that there's not
there's no change with this request.
We approved signage on the pumps, et cetera, et cetera, I don't recall that. And the canopy sign? I mean, the colors? Because I know there was-
I think, I think we approved the canopy colors.
Did the historical colors of America was included as a condition?
There was no sign on the canopy.
That's correct, but there's color and stripes.
We approved the colors on the canopy because there was, we said that that's, the little bit of blue in color they had wasn't a big deal.
But I remember the other gas pumps, they always want extra signs, and we did not allow those, so we didn't see what was gonna be on their pumps.
Well, they said they ain't gonna put a sign on them.
On the pumps?
No, on the canopy.
On the canopy.
They gotta have a sign for the-
Yes. If it's part by law, you have to have the, the price for down.
I agree, but there are other, on the pumps, Cumberland came back, they wanted more signs on their pumps, and, and it was kinda like a billboard for other things, so, but...
So what, just so I don't spend the next half hour writing things down, I'm gonna ask, so what I'm proposing to do is, we're going to amend your site plan approval to approve the plans dated August 2, 2016, as amended, and then I'm just gonna, I'm gonna list all of these. So would you be able to, you must have these in text somewhere?
I can send those to you, absolutely.
Okay, so just send me this list in text, so that I can cut and paste it rather than scribble it down. And, so we're going to amend your site plan approval to incorporate this, and I'll also make a note that C2 is not part of the approved plan.
The master plan. That's, that's there just for reference only, right?
Yep.
Okay, so the, the motion is, okay, 10-7-10. Uh, the motion is to amend the site, original site plan approval special permit of August 16, 2016. Determination the proposed changes are not significant or major and can be addressed without reopening the public hearing. Planning board has reviewed and approved the following changes. Plans dated 8/216, as amended, and then I'm just gonna list each one here. And I'm gonna add a note that C2, the master plan, is not part of the approved site plan and appears for build-out reference only. All findings and conditions of the original decision, which are not inconsistent with this amendment, are incorporated by reference and continue in full force and effect.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you vote? Motion passed unanimously. How should we sign, how should I sign this?
Uh, you know what, I'm going to suggest that we are going to ask you to do a new first page that will incorporate this.
Certainly.
And then bring that back for signature.
All right. Okay, do you want us to take those plans with us back?
Yeah, yeah, we don't need them.
Okay. Save us your printing, too.
It'll just confuse us.
So, Mr. Nyar, how do I get you this stuff? Email?
You're gonna take this, but they have the changes on here, you don't have it on the app.
No, no, we're gonna get a new, we're gonna get a new set of these.
Oh.
A new front page. Everything else will be the same. You wanna, you wanna copy for any reason?
Hadley, or Planning and the Hadley-
You wanna copy Mike? I have ten copies, yeah.
Right now, or? Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Okay.
Are you keeping that one?
Yeah.
Do you want that?
When you come in next, he's gonna whip that out. Line by line, guys.
Are you, are you doing schedule for today?
When you go home, no funny stuff like this.
No.
No, you haven't. Well, I guess one of those ways, 'cause, like, there's some things that aren't clear in my earlier discussion, and a thought arose that, you know, perhaps someone else has asked for it. Did I even have to apply if it's agriculture, if it's under the statutes that it's permissible?
Okay, it's only agriculture if it's the trees you're cutting from your own land that you're carving up in cordwood.
I don't think that's the way the state law reads, any wood product is agriculture.
But not every site processing wood products is agriculture.
Well, how is that determined and handled?
Well, I asked, I asked Attorney Joel Bard about, at least two years ago about that before a town meeting.
Oh, two years ago? So I mean, the ones that are started since then, or?
I'm only telling you, I, I don't, I can't answer the question.
Yeah, you're not the zoning enforcement officer.
But, but all he said was that if they're cutting their own trees and processing them, that's pure agricultural. If they're cutting somebody else's trees and selling it, it falls into a gray area, and he said it's not exactly clear.
Oh, so.
He says, I'm only, I'm-
All right, I understand, but I mean, if there's a precedent, I mean, it's three other ones in a neighborhood, it's not like I'm the first one.
You'd have to ask Mr. Nyhar, the zoning enforcement officer, I don't know how he's interpreted that, and-
Well, interestingly, Joey mentioned Allard, did Allard, I mean, that's agriculture there, I mean, they do a thousand, you said, a thousand cord a year.
Well, that's-
And I know, Joe, wow, I don't believe he's ever had a business requirement.
If you wanted a clear definition, what you should do is come before us for a site plan approval.
Let me ask you this, then.
For, come before us for a site plan approval, with, and the neighbors would be notified, and some, someone may object that the, they wanna limit the hours of use, and they wanna limit the number of trucks going in. How big is the operation gonna be? Is it gonna be a small mom-and-pop operation, or is it gonna be a big commercial operation?
No, it wouldn't be any bigger than Allard's.
Well, Allard, Allard is grandfathered in under their zoning, so that's not even comparable to what we-
Well, I mean, right across the street, it's clean cordwood, it just started, started a year ago. It's not gonna be any different now.
We don't have, we don't have the answer to your question.
Well, all right, well, I guess, in other words, if I just did it and called it agriculture...
And the zoning enforcement officer tried to shut you down, then you could have that-
Appeal to the-
Bet you could appeal it, and you could have that out.
So you're not the zoning enfor, if I did it, just did it, and he stopped me, he'd have to stop everybody else.
Uh, that's his job, zoning enforcement is his job, he doesn't work for us.
Oh, he doesn't want us to stop him.
No.
He worked for the town, he worked for the Board of Selectmen. The zoning enforcement officer reports to the Board of Selectmen, not to the planning board. That's state law.
Interesting.
We ran into that with Mr. Bard, that the planning board can have no authority over the zoning enforcement.
Can you double-check with the town's attorney, or should I hire an attorney? And if I'm right, who the heck, why, should I pay for something that I have a right to do?
We, we really can't ask the town attorney's opinion on a specific-
Can you ask Mr. Nixon to ask, 'cause he's gonna be a attorney?
Not on a specific case that isn't before us.
Oh, so I have to make a site plan review?
If you wanna apply and go through that exercise, even though you might not have to-
Okay, so it's clear, though, no one else has done this in a neighborhood, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, so if I make a site plan review, did one, what's there? That, is that okay?
Whether before zoning or not before zoning?
Well, zoning was 2000, 1962, was it? Is there a special town zoning?
The zoning changed.
When? No, when did it change? Regarding cordwood and agriculture? He said it changed, what?
Well, no, no, you-
The zoning changed.
Well, I mean, you go to zoning enforcement officer, so you gotta tell him about the change.
You have a question to put to the building inspector.
Right.
As to whether he is going to give you the permit you need.
You think he's, he knows about the change?
If he, it's not really a change.
Oh, well, this is a right decision to change.
He misspoken, it's not a change, it's not a change, it is what it is.
All right.
There was a zoning change in that area, so.
But it's still business.
It's still open, but his, his question is whether he's agriculturally exempt from zoning, period.
If I, can I get on the agenda next meeting, and then I'll, I'll go to the law lawyer, and I'll bring the law?
No, no, it's not our call to make.
What, what? To read the law?
No, no, it's not our decision to make.
Yeah, but you, you, you-
I could read law, I could read law very well.
Every decision you make is a part of the zoning laws.
However, your first call, you have to ask the zoning enforcement officer if you are agriculturally exempt for what you propose to do.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, I think I made a mistake by even calling it a business, it's not a business.
You, you may have, what we're saying is, depending on what the zoning-
Yeah, okay, so that's what I'm saying, it's-
Okay.
You need to go to zoning enforcement.
You have to talk to Tim Nyhar.
He didn't tell me that, he didn't tell me I made a mistake, he told me to come see you.
Okay.
He made this big rigamiro on the, on the-
You need, you need to find, exactly-
On the clerk's stationery.
Exactly what Bill said, you need to go to Mr. Nyhar, find out if you're agriculturally exempt or not for what you want to do.
Okay.
And when the question is before him, he can call town council and ask for an opinion.
Okay, but then I asked him about the building that would be required for just the processor in that operation, he said it would require a building permit, even though it's not in clause.
Well, building permit is one thing, as opposed to site plan approval requiring this, that's separate thing.
All right, so it's very clear, if it's agriculture, I'm wasting my time, I shouldn't be here.
That's correct.
So the mistake I made was even asking for a certificate to run a business. I mean, it's not a, I mean, do farmers come in here to run their farm operations next round over, they're running a store? That's agriculture.
That's agricultural.
Well, then I'm wasting this, why didn't Nyhar tell me that? I shouldn't even be here tonight.
That, that's possible.
Yeah, but it's still item D. Can I get on the agenda for that next week about the aquifer recharge? And I'll see Mr. Zadonik and get more information, I was just shocked when he said it's not on the, on the maps.
I don't know what, I mean, you, if you, you can, you can come in just to talk to us like you did tonight at, at the open part of the meeting, that's not a problem.
Well, can you go back in your archives and look at the records? I specifically asked for it, you, you had a vote on it, and you said you would do it, and yet it wasn't executed on the other end. What did you, what was the expenditure, what did you pay for that? No one did that for nothing.
We, we get it as part of the annual PVPC contract, they have given us the map because they have them on record.
Right.
For them to give us that all required was a printout of a piece of paper. They can, they can, they can forward that to GIS to do exactly the same thing, it's just a information of electronic-
Right.
Back and forth. I don't, we can't answer why the assessors have not put it on the tax map.
Yeah, okay, well, so, you know, two maps, I'm good with that, but if you have a zoning enforcement officer that cannot interpret the, the map that shows the aquifer and where it's in relationship to properties, that's a problem. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying it's Nyhar's problem, Mr. Nyhar is probably not schooled to do that, nor is he probably required to do that.
Okay.
But somebody's gotta-
You make a good point, but we can't help you with it, because he doesn't work for us. If you, if you need to understand his limitations, you need to talk to his-
Well, I think I understand his limitations.
Well, you need to talk to his boss.
Who is that?
Select Board.
Yeah, but they empowered Mr. Nixon to pretty much do all the select board work.
Well, you could talk to Mr. Nixon then, or you can go to the, you can go to the public comment period of the select board, or ask to be put on their agenda. He works for them, we can't tell him what to do.
Last I knew, they don't even have a full board.
They still have a four, they still have four members.
All right, well, thanks for not helping. You've been very helpful. But I'm just curious, you said it was done under the Pioneer Valley, what?
The zoning map was paid for out of our budget.
Right, that, the zoning, the zoning map with the aquifer recharge on it is done by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Right.
And, and they can easily transfer that-
We don't know that, do we?
Well, no, but we, we asked for that, I mean, that's like some, I don't know what the big deal is, you know, it's all computerized, why can't they overlay the aquifer onto the zoning? And then Mr. Nyhar would go, he could look at it and say, yes, you're right.
We, we don't know that answer. I know that they can easily give the electronic information, PVPC, to whoever in electronic format. How easy it is to merge the maps together, I do not have any idea.
I'll learn to correct my guess. All right. Burnt out. I'll be back right after the city. Not tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So, on other items, the Portable Housing Trust Roundtable is tomorrow night.
Correct. So 6 o'clock general tour meeting, but the actual discussion roundtable starts at 6:45 in Boltwood Walk.
That's the one we're going to, we're not going through the tour, I mean.
Not unless you want to.
Guys, you guys got the same genes as this guy, or?
Good thing we're on camera, 'cause I can't answer that.
Good thing we're on camera.
Right.
We do have, we received the hard copy of the master plan update. I gave each of you a copy tonight. I am proposing to put a copy in every mailbox at Town Hall, so it'll get to every department. And I am going to ask David Nixon to get us on the agenda for a future select board meeting, so we can present them with, I'll, I'll make sure they get copies in advance, just so we can report back to them.
Okay.
There is a tentative all boards meeting set for next Wednesday. And I talked with Select Board Chairman Keegan, she wondered if we wanted to make a presentation about this at the all boards meeting. I said, the last all boards meeting kinda went in a thousand different directions, and that it probably is something, it might take more time than we wanna spend, but she's saying that she may like, may want to defer the all boards meeting until November anyway. The idea is to have the meeting before the budget season starts, so everybody is sort of out there with what we need, and she does think that some of these goals should be factored into the budgeting process, which is fine. They're gonna, Select Board's gonna talk about that tomorrow night.
Okay.
About when they're gonna schedule the all boards meeting, but that sounds right to everybody, get this to, to the other departments, get it to the Select Board, and ask to be on the Select Board agenda for a future meeting.
Yes.
Is this, is this book gonna be on a, on the webpage for anybody to see?
I believe we should be able to get it, we had, all the pieces were available, so I'm-
Is there any arrangements being made to have that?
Not yet, not yet, but it's a good idea. We got, who's in charge of the town website?
I'm not sure, I think maybe Jennifer in the Select Board office.
Okay. 'Cause the old master plan, I believe, was on the website.
I think it is.
Yeah, well, I know a few people asked me about it, and I said that, you know, I think it's gonna be posted on the web.
It should be, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And, post to website.
Are you gonna talk to her about that?
I will talk to her about that.
Thank you.
First, I will talk to Larry about getting an electronic copy.
Yes.
Okay.
You have anything else?
I do not have anything else, oh.
I got a couple.
There is this Route nine. I'll put that on future agenda.
Okay.
What's that Route nine about what?
This, from the engineers saying, this is our concept plan for Route nine. This is our concept plan for Route nine, take a look at it.
Yeah, do we have any say in it?
Not even much of a plan.
Not even much of a plan.
Not much detail, not many details on it.
Where'd that come from, Bill?
Greenman Peterson, Inc.
Well, can't we, can't, can't we submit them for a detailed plan? I'm sure they have them. Something like that.
So we can request more information.
Well, a detailed plan, a big plan, I guess.
Can I see a couple of them? Why are they in Cincinnati?
Well, what are we gonna do with it?
Take a look at it, that's for one thing.
Just wanna take a look at it.
What are you gonna do with it?
We can't tell them what to do.
What, we can't say nothing, why not?
We can sample, we can say.
We'll go there and ask them and let them answer it.
Anything else?
Uh, I have nothing else.
Um, we will bill pay for the Daily Answer Gazette of one forty-nine, point eighty for legal notices, for I don't know what it was for, for the last public hearing we had. Which was oh, the wagging tail.
Yep.
Okay. Entertainer motion to pay it?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, motion passes. And as general information, Finance Committee has a meeting on Thursday, October nineteenth, beginning at seven PM in the town hall, second floor conference room to talk about two thousand eighteen town meeting, special town meeting follow-up and preparing for, beginning to talk about the two thousand and nineteen budget season. And we also received information on open meeting law regulations and I guess.
I sent around an email to everybody on that.
Are we each supposed to sign this, or just the chairman for the body?
I think we are each supposed to sign it.
Okay, give it back to.
Jessica.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna put mine through.
What is it, just to, to follow, you're the chairman, to follow procedure?
No, it's just, it's an acknowledgement that we understand the requirements of the new open meeting bylaws, so that's.
But, but you're right, it is normally up to the chairman to make, to, as the main enforcer.
Right.
But if I make a mistake, you guys are supposed to make, hey, we're supposed to do this, or that's not right.
Oh, no, I don't care, I assume you do the right thing. I'm not going there.
That's all I have.
Okay, I have nothing else?
What about, what about a future discussion about accessory apartments, not attached?
Come up with a kind of what you would like to see, so we would have some points where to start.
Well, I'm just, I'll chit chat about it.
I'll bring, I'll add it.
Right. And then also I've got some thoughts about opening business to allow them to put up a banner. So, like, how, you know, just to open business for, whether it's a month or what. So they're there that they can put up a banner or something for them that
I think that's.
Thirty days.
They put them up.
That's covered, that's in the bylaw already.
That's in the bylaw already, banners are covered.
Yeah, temporary.
Temporary banners are covered. I forgot what this.
Is there a certain sign on them?
Let me see. Section seven.
That's where, under the signs?
Section seven. Non-committed signs. Okay, specialty signs, the following specialty signs will also be allowed. Banners for special events such as grant openings, charitable, religious, or civic events provided they conform to section seven point eight. Seven point eight, temporary signs.
Must conform to all the requirements for permanent signs with respect.
Twelve square feet. That's a pretty good size banner.
Hmm, not really.
Six by two.
You know, I mean, what's the period of time?
Sixty days. Three, two months.
Two months. I just think the site should be a little bit bigger than that, if they want to, you know, they get a, a new business. I mean, I look at it the way amazon.com is doing a number, a hatchet job on these businesses and you know, I, I certainly wanna do everything I can to have these businesses stay in business or open in business, you know, so they can.
Okay, future agenda. We will put it on. That is all I have. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is that it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, thank you, John. This meeting is history. Um, let's see.
So you're gonna get a first-hand job?
Is, is the camera off?